Regular meeting in Littleton City Council order on April 2nd, 2024. City declared roll call, please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Present.
Mayor Protembar.
Here.
Councilmember Reichardt.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Ryden.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thanks. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Next item up is the approval of the agenda. Council set a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? See no changes. It's approved without objection. Item number four is a public comment. Public comment is time for members of the community to come speak to council about opinions regarding issues that are not on tonight's public hearings. There will be separate opportunity for that. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. When you get to three minutes, I will let you know we'll get there. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, disruptive comments will not be tolerated. Council is not authorized under open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that's not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer matters to the city manager or attorney for immediate comment. I'll go through the list of people that have signed up here. When you get up here, please say your name and your address or district. First up, I have Sandy Cook.
Hello, Sandy Cook, 6705 South Santa Fe, Littleton. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Sandy Cook. I am the interim operations manager of the Meadowwood Cooperative. Our co-op was formed so that the residents of Meadowwood can make an offer to purchase our 55-plus mobile home park located at 6705 South Santa Fe Drive, Littleton. We have been working with Thistle ROC and can secure financing through them if we are able to raise our down payment. I'm here to ask the city of Littleton for a grant or loan to help us in this endeavor. Most of our residents have planned to live out their retirement in Meadowwood and do not have the means to relocate. Without your support, many may be forced to move, leaving behind the safety, security, and economic stability that our senior park provides. We are a small, tight-knit community of 92 mobile homes and 121 residents. We own our own homes, but not the land that it sits on. Purchasing the land will give us the ability to control rent increases and ensure that we can remain in our homes. I feel purchasing the park is the only way we can guarantee our community continues to provide affordable housing. Our residents are seniors, veterans, disabled, and low-income individuals, many living on just social security. Some of our residents were born and raised in Littleton, some like myself moved here to be near family in our senior years. An offer to purchase has been made to the current owner from a mega out-of-state corporation with no corporate ties to Littleton or Colorado. They are known to raise lot rents dramatically and will cancel the 30-day lease of anyone that complains. They give bonuses to park managers to keep the operation costs low at the expense of residents. It is also possible they could close our park and sell it to a developer. Our future is being threatened by a predatory company whose only interest is profit. President Biden's State of the Union address conveyed the need for affordable housing, and many of our state and local officials have expressed this is a priority in Colorado. We are the poster child for what we hear our elected officials say they are proponents of. We are working with DOLA and Arapahoe County and others to secure grants. We need the support of Littleton to make this happen. We cannot do it without your help. Please help us preserve the strong community spirit of Meadowwood, alive and locally owned. Please help us save our homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up is David Stoudt.
My name is David Stoudt. I live at 5705 South Santa Fe Drive, Littleton, Colorado. It's a senior 55-plus mobile home community located just north of Breckenridge Brewery, off Brewery Lane. I grew up in Littleton area. I've been here since 1973. Last time I was in front of the Littleton City Council was when I was in a Boy Scout, asking to do my Eagle Scout project, at which time they assigned me the task of painting an exterior of a home of an elderly man. This time, I'm here not to ask what I can do for the city, but what can the city do for me? Enough about me. Meadowwood Village is a community of homes that each pay rent to a landlord. The owner is a large corporation out of California who manages and operates properties across America. We've been given notice that the corporation was offered a large amount of money to sell the property. In the current bylaws, our community has 120 days to make a counteroffer to the owner. This has been a very stressful time for our current residents as they are unsure of a secure future. Most of our residents are low fixed income. Unfortunately, there are no laws to protect homeowners from landlords for raising the rent on senior mobile home communities. Meadowwood Village is one of two last mobile home parks in the city of Littleton. We're home of 92 homes. We have 92 homes, 121, mostly retired citizens, most of which are on fixed incomes and social security, retirement, and military pensions. What has our community done so far? We gathered and formed a cooperative with the state of Colorado. We have support of 93% of our community. We elected an interim board of directors. We're working with the Arapahoe County Commissioner Kerry Warren Gully, along with DOLA from the state of Colorado. We're working with nonprofit, a nonprofit out of Boulder, Colorado called Thistle Rock, which helps mobile home parks residents buy and manage these types of properties. Thistle Rock will loan us the money to make this offer. First, our community needs to raise the money to show their investors that we're serious.
Thank you, Mr. Stoudt. Next up is Elaine Davies.
Hi, my name is Elaine Davies. I moved to Meadowwood Village on July 1st, 1995. That represents 25 years, and my lot rent was $215 per month, which was wonderful back then. I live on my social security check. In more recent years, my social security increase was less than my lot rent increase. In order to live on my social security check, I have had to lower other expenses, such as stop the newspaper, cancel my landline, I stopped my life insurance, I've taken no vacations, I don't go to movies anymore, I do no shopping other than groceries and gas, and no dinner out. Occasionally, I treat myself to lunch. Now I only go to McDonald's for their kids' meal. The next cut will probably be my cable television. A big increase in lot rent is scary. I don't want to lose my home and independence because I can't afford to live there. Please help me. Thank you. And if you look at the bottom, I have a history of five years of what my lot rent was each year and an average of the total rent I paid. The total rent includes the lot, rent, sewer, trash, and water. Please help us.
Thank you, Ms. Davies. Next up is Paula White.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Paula White. I live at Meadowwood Mobile Home Park for the last 10 years. I have spent my life living in Littleton. I moved to Meadowwood as my last forever home because that is what I can afford, living on social security every month. With the threat of a large corporation coming in and buying the park, my rent would double, the result being more than my social security check of $1,600 a month. The residents of Meadowwood are trying to buy the park, but with the price tag of 18 million, the reality is we need financial help to lower the principal so the monthly rent cost more, would cost, excuse me, the lower principal so the monthly rent cost would be more affordable for the 121 senior residents. The residents of the park are terrified of losing their homes and being displaced. We are looking for subsidies, and we're asking for the city of Littleton to help. I think it is important that the Littleton helps support the senior citizens with affordable housing. Thank you for your time and listening. And if I may say, all these people here are Meadowwood residents here backing us up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next up is Aubrey Ebs.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Aubrey Ebs. I live at 4561 West Lake Circle North. I am a commissioner and vice chair of the South Metro Housing Options. Since 1971, SMHO has been serving Littleton by providing affordable housing needs in Littleton and Arapahoe County. We own and manage over 540 affordable apartment homes within six communities and administer 650 housing choice vouchers. I think the importance of meeting the housing needs of our community has clearly been demonstrated tonight already, but I am here really to thank you for your support of affordable housing. I know you understand the importance of it and your commitment of $600,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act funds is making it feasible for us to pursue a new low-income housing tax credit application. The project just south of downtown Littleton, 5848 South Rapp Street, will bring 50 new affordable units to downtown Littleton, and just really want to thank you. And also, just say how proud I am of the work that we've done in this community to bring affordable housing units. That includes our newest community, which is Overlook at Powers Park, which just recently opened. If you haven't had a chance to see it, we really encourage you to come by, let us know. We'd love to give you a tour. Smart communities provide a variety of housing options for current and future citizens. We look forward to partnering with today's community leaders, neighbors, and residents so that Littleton can continue to be a vibrant, creative, and diverse community for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Next up is JD McCrum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is JD McCrum. I live at 5845 South Hickory Street, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Board of Directors at Town Hall Arts Center. As you are aware, Town Hall Arts Center is in the early stages of a significant capital campaign to renovate the historic downtown theater, and I'm here tonight to speak and encourage you to support the Enterprise Zone, which is on your consent agenda tonight. The Enterprise Zone would create a significant tool that would allow us to attract donors and hopefully raise the money we need a lot faster so that we can raise less money and do so. So I just want to thank the staff and their efforts so far to get that in front of you tonight and encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrum. Next up is Karen Talentire.
I'm Karen Talentire, as you know. I emailed you some screenshots from the 2,000 pages of Dominion emails that came from discovery in one of the cases where they sued everybody for defamation, which is of course the way every reputable company reassures their customers. One screenshot shows a Glassdoor review I found of what it's like to work for Dominion in Serbia. Apparently, the Serbians like it just fine. Another screenshot shows a group email with a Taiwanese software company about tests. "How do you feel about our voting systems being developed so internationally? Good thing international IT people are incorruptible and only think of the good of America. Otherwise, this might be a problem." There is a screenshot of when employees were concerned there could be a problem with some unexpected logins from Kosovo in April 2020. I wonder if they were open with Arapahoe County about the potential compromise? Another screenshot shows a conversation in Serbian about testing Colorado voting machines. To test, they connect to the machines from Serbia and vote, somehow not over the internet. Another screenshot shows an employee casually talking about when, not if, the machines connect to the internet, it is no longer a closed system. Remember the Dominion CEO, John Pullos, saying under oath that Dominion machines are not connected to the internet? There's a separate case docketed at the Supreme Court right now, Lake versus Fontes, which shows Dominion altered the machine software after it was certified. That means the election was run on uncertified software, and legally there was no 2020 or 2022 election in Arizona or any place these machines were used, like Colorado. Also, the encryption keys were stored in plain text on the machines in Maricopa, which is a problem since they claim that even if someone does break into the system, it's okay because everything inside the system is encrypted. This is like my telling you that even if someone broke into your house, they could not get into your locked safe, but then I don't mention that I left the key to your safe taped to your front door. So the Arizona Secretary of State has chosen not to respond to this case so far. That's because it's a rather difficult situation for their lawyers. In view of four affidavits recently filed in the Supreme Court, they would either have to admit their clients lied, which means admitting there was no legal election, or join in the lie, in which case they're abetting the fraud. So this would be a great time to exercise your authority in Littleton City Code 172B, which basically says Littleton can decide to do anything it wants to with Littleton elections anytime. The sheriff who put out the Dominion emails advised a hand count of paper ballots to confirm the accuracy of the vote. As he said, there is no harm in confirming results to ensure that the will of the people is reflected.
Thank you, Ms. Talentire. That's all the people that have signed up ahead of time. Is there anybody else in the room that would wish to speak before council here? Ms. Chadbourne?
Good evening, Council. I didn't know Meadowwood was going to talk tonight, but I've been talking to Schmo about this for a couple of years, and Schmo has failed to act on providing affordable housing along Santa Fe. So, Council, I'd like you to step up, and I'd like you to get Schmo on board to support Meadowwood's attempt to purchase their homes. So the point is that manufactured homes are the best way to have homeownership in America, affordable homeownership. And definitely in Colorado, because whether construction defects get fixed or not, we're just not going to have these home-buying opportunities. Schmo even sold our public housing, or is having Habitat sell it, and so this is Littleton's way to invest in, really honestly, it's been said, do what you say. Do what you say, Council. You have not done affordable housing in Littleton. IHO requires 5%, the least amount of any IHO that was considered, and you're allowing in lieu. So a lot of communities don't even have integrated income, which is essential for the next step of affordable housing in the United States. Preserve Meadowwood. Talk to these folks, figure out what we can do and what coalition you can build in this community to make it happen. This is not just for the folks who spoke. This is for the city of Littleton, for the next several generations of the people who will live there. Council, you need to think of the city. You don't own this land. You have no right to decide any of this stuff as if it was yours, and you can just toss it off. And the second thing I want to talk about is the IGA with the Enterprise Zone. You don't have the right to make this decision. There's been no study session about this. You've not explained the impact on the city to us in the city. You don't know the future impact. You don't know what's going to happen to, whether it's going to work. What about traffic? What about land uses? What about the asset of the historic district that we have there that no other city in Colorado has, which Colorado Preservation Bank pointed out in 2014? You have not done your homework here, Council, and you have not accounted to the people or the future of the city. And future city councils are going to inherit the harm that you are doing now. One thing that really bothers me is your consequences. The consequences that you are making will bind the city for 80, 100 years, and it will hurt us. And you, it's your job, your elected job, is to perform due diligence on the part of the city and the future residents and us, and you're not. All you have to do is ask the city manager and staff for data, and you fail to do it over and over. Do not take the Resolution 43 out of here and demand more information about it and support Meadowwood.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak during public comment? Seeing no one, I'll end public comment at 6:51. We'll go to comments and reports. We'll start with Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, thank you. Last week, we had, I attended our Downtown Development Authority meeting, and on that meeting, once again, we talked about the Denver Water Project, trying to figure out whether, when that's going to happen, whether that's going to come through Maine in the first quarter of 2025 or '26. So we're working with the city on that. And also, we had a presentation by Project Downtown, and they had presented several, three options, ideas on what downtown could look like when the city gets torn up a little bit with Denver Water and getting that Maine put in stuff. We'll be having another meeting on Project Downtown. I apologize, I should have had the date written down, but there's one be coming up here very shortly. Maybe Cindy can help me out. But, and then also attended the Littleton Business Chamber event or meeting. Good news, our Women in Leadership Conference is sold out. That will be held on April 24th. That is, we have Councilmember Ryden talking, along with, I think, five other ladies, and really excited for that conference. I think that's going to be a great event. That'll do it. Thanks.
Councilmember Ryden.
No report.
Councilmember Peters.
Good evening. I would just say thank you so much to the residents of Meadowwood for coming to speak to us and share what's going on over there, and I really appreciate how vulnerable some of you were, and I hope that we can figure out how we can help and how South Metro Housing Options could hopefully help, and if the city and other things could help as well. Thanks for sharing.
Councilmember Reichardt.
Couple things. Had the March meeting of the Transportation Mobility Board last week. Want to say thank you to Kent, our departing member, for his leadership and service to the city. And we had a long discussion around preparing to meet with us as a council in July to talk about Vision Zero and what that would mean for the city, and I think they're going to do a lot of good homework, and I think already based on the discussion that we had at our meeting, there's going to be a thoughtful conversation for the city around what that would mean for us, so I'm really appreciate that. Really grateful that I got to participate in the
Really grateful that I got to participate in the state-of-the-art event at the museum. I'm really grateful for the work of the Arts Commission in supporting that and moving that forward, and grateful that I got to participate in that. I'm the inaugural award winner this year. I don't know, was it Artist of the Year? I can't even, was fantastic, and I'm really glad. I also was there to support Ms. Muffey, institution in the city who taught my kids ballet, and that was fantastic. And then last night, with a couple of other council members, I was able to attend the Cycling Without Age. And I think, you know, the Cycling Without Age event was lovely for many reasons, but I think the most important thing is that, you know, it's a relatively new nonprofit that's contributing to the health of our community. And I think nonprofits, in all different forms, bring great vitality to our city, and I really appreciate the fact that my neighbors, our neighbors, are stepping up and making this a community a better place to live, and I was grateful to be able to witness that.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove.
Yes, to add on to what Councilmember Reckert said, I also attended the state-of-the-art event. It was wonderful to interact with artists, members of the business community, citizens. They had more attendees than they had last year. I think it was double. And our, the first Arts and Culture Award went to Sonia Ellingbo.
I did hear that.
Oh, okay. Her name, as you know, she's been a force and a leader in the arts community for many, many years, decades. And it was nice to see her, and it was nice to see her honored. I also attended the Cycling Without Age event with my fellow council members, Councilmember Barr and Reckert. And it was just very wonderful to hear about this nonprofit. What happens is, is they have bicycles and there's like a carriage in front where people can sit. And it's for people that want to kind of feel like they're cycling when they, in many cases, no longer can or have never been able to due to some sort of disability. And we heard from the people that get rides on this, and it was just so wonderful to hear how meaningful this organization was. Also, we saw what they call the pilots, who actually take them on the rides, and they go, they pick up from various places throughout the community, and they go on various trails. So it was just a wonderful opportunity. And also, just a reminder that we're going to see the eclipse on Monday. I know we don't have totality, but we will have something here, so something to not forget.
Mayor Portem.
So I won't repeat how wonderful the state-of-the-art or the Cycling Without Age events are, but
You just did.
Not in its entirety. So, but I did want to provide just a brief update on our Denver Regional Council of Governments. The meeting this last month was actually primarily discussing legislation currently in the State House, taking positions on that, which you can see on the Dr. Cog website, so I won't recap it. But two things to note, we did make final awards for the Community-Based Transportation Planning Grant Program, which is a program that is specifically for technical assistance in improving mobility in disproportionately impacted or marginalized communities. There was a huge turnout of applications this year across the Dr. Cog region, and so only five of the 10 projects that were submitted were actually able to be funded. But I hope that in future years that we can aim for some of these programs as well. In addition, the next solicitation for projects for corridor study programs at Dr. Cog is coming in spring 2025. And for those that don't know, we are actually, I think, just rounding out corridor studies on Broadway. These planning grants actually allow us to do a lot of kind of the pre-development work that allows us to make significant transportation improvements on our major transportation corridors, looking at things like multimodal mobility, bus rapid transit, and the like. So that project, that corridor study program is coming up again in spring of 2025, and hopefully we can find a way to participate with our partners in the region. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Just a couple of things for me. Tomorrow morning, I've got Metro Mayor's caucus, full caucus meeting. We'll have a legislative discussion, an update from CML, and also from our Legislative Committee Chair, who's the mayor, Castroda from Broomfield, who sits on the Property Tax Committee. I know the Property Tax Committee has recommendations for how to address property taxes rising. I haven't had a chance to look at that yet, but we'll get an update tomorrow. We'll also get an update from Mayor Johnson in Denver about the migrant homelessness situations in Denver and what they're doing to address that. And finally, we'll get an update from Dr. Cog and RTD on some of the things that they're working on. Also, tomorrow, I believe it is, is the Advent Health 35th Year Anniversary, tomorrow afternoon, so I'll be attending that and speaking at that. And then just kind of a question slash direction for the city manager and/or city attorney about being able to connect with Commissioner Warren Gully and South Metro Housing Options to provide counsel with some information on possible options for Meadowwood, if South Metro Housing Options could be a part of that city, what that looks like, to give us some kind of information on that. And then also, finally, I think there was a little confusion about what the Enterprise Zone resolution is. If during your comments, if you could just briefly touch on that. I'm not expecting anyone to pull it off of consent agenda, but just so there's a little bit of mention of that.
I certainly will. I'm planning to.
And that's all I have. So turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. First of all, regarding Meadowwood and their, the interest that we heard tonight, I know the city attorney's office has been researching the city's role and the city's housing policy analyst has also been working with the Department of Local Affairs and also with South Metro Housing Options to understand what role the city could play and what those options are. So to the mayor's point, we certainly do want to bring some options forward. One thing I would say tonight, or two, the points we heard tonight, is that I am eager to follow up with our, the analyst in the city manager's office and understand whether we do have kind of the latest specific request for support and what that could be. It sounds like that concept may have evolved. So I'm eager to connect with that group and really make sure that we're thorough in our consideration of what the city's options might be, because we certainly agree that mobile home park communities are important for our affordable housing communities, housing stock. Second thing, regarding the enterprise zone, I do just want to clarify that the city has been part of the enterprise zone that covers Littleton and is currently managed by the city of Englewood, that they manage the same enterprise zone that Sheridan, Englewood, Parker, and Littleton are all part of. And we've been part of that, I understand, for almost 10 years. So it doesn't change this enterprise zone. It's not a new enterprise zone. In our recent negotiations or discussions with Englewood about a particular project that you heard about tonight that could be coming down the pike, you know, we had heard from Englewood that given the specific kind of context for contribution projects, they're called, it's one category of the enterprise zone program, that they really would be more comfortable with that if the city, if the city of Littleton handled the administration of that. I'll stress that enterprise zone projects and tax credits are not managed by the city. The city does not have a role even in approving those projects. They're all managed, they're all approved by the state through the Department of Local Affairs and the enterprise zone program that manages really all of them across the state. So tonight, we'd just be seeking council's approval of this resolution to allow us to administer this category of enterprise zone projects that we do think could be a benefit to projects downtown. But by this action, in no way are we approving a given project for the enterprise zone program or for land use or anything else, any of the important considerations that we heard about tonight. Finally, I just want to
I just want to clarify a question. So basically, it's just not changing the zone, not changing anything, but just allowing us to be the point of contact with any applicant to help
Right. The record keeper that we have to work with the applicant if they are approved to forward records to the state. So that's why we thought it's not of great new impact, since we're already part of that program. Finally, I do just want to remind the council and the public that over the next month, the council will be hearing the kind of final concepts and options, several of them, for Project Downtown. And all of that entails, there is a public meeting scheduled for April 8th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM, and that meeting will be virtual. That's in partnership with all the other stakeholder meetings that are happening these couple of weeks, and we're very eager to advance that feedback along with those options to the city council. That concludes my comments tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Just to clarify real quick, Mayor, and then there'll be a live meeting for Project Downtown at Bemis Library on the 10th, starting at 4, sorry, not, I have it down here, starting at 5 o'clock, 5 to 7 on the 10th.
Thank you, councilmember.
Yes, councilmember.
I'm not positive what the timeline is for Meadowwood, but that 120 days, I know Reed knows when that is, but time is definitely of the essence. If we can get any information on how we could help as soon as possible.
Yeah, so I think the letter that went out to residents, the letter that the city received was dated on January 2nd. I'm not sure when that was actually received and how the calendar works in terms of, does it go by the date that it's mailed or the date that they put on a letter? So yeah, it would be quickly approaching, the 120 days. Just in listening to some of the residents, I think they have been exploring all the available resources that are open to them. They mentioned Thistle Rock, which is a resident-owned communities, Resident-Owned Communities USA, the Impact Development Fund. Those are sort of, we'll call them lenders, if you will, that facilitate financing for co-ops to come in and try to purchase. I know that the state has a mobile home park resident empowerment program where there are certain amounts of revolving grant funds that are available, and I'm sure that they've probably spoken with them, but if they're speaking with Thistle Rock in terms of trying to arrange that financing, you know, from far as I can see, that they're taking the appropriate steps and trying to secure that funding. And what the city's role could be, you know, I know different location, but the city of Denver recently made a loan to a co-op to help purchase, theirs was a loan. But we will certainly talk with South Metro Housing Options and see what sort of additional resources may be available, and through the city manager, report back to city council.
Yeah, I'm in communication with Justin from Thistle and think things are stalled out there, and so they need commitment sooner than later on these finances, but
Yeah, one thing that I haven't heard is a number.
Six million.
Pardon?
Why don't we continue
We can talk about it later.
When we agendize it for something.
Any further update from the city attorney?
No, I was just going to echo the city manager's comments on the enterprise zones. This is something that's established by the state. It's not an enterprise zone that the city of Littleton or Englewood put together, but something that the state's economic commission puts together, and they provide those tax incentives for various tiers of businesses that may want to come in. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Yes, councilmember.
I also want to echo what councilmember Peters just said. I think the timeline is important, and I'm really interested in what the, what a loan option would be, what a grant option could be, and any other out of the box, thinking I would love to see those options.
All right. Next item on the agenda is scheduled appearances. We have no scheduled appearances tonight. I'm seven are proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight. Proclamation proclaiming April 7th through April 13th, 2024, National Library Week in the city of Littleton. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to educate and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions no matter where they are on life's journey. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make and support choices that are environmentally and economically sustainable, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. Whereas the city of Littleton's public library has been serving our community since 1897. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining the library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, Kyle Schlatter, Mayor of the city of Littleton, do hereby proclaim April 7th through April 13th, 2024, as National Library Week. The city of Littleton and urge all citizens to visit the Edwin A. Bemis Public Library and meet your friendly and helpful library team and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. And I believe we have, oh, he's already at the podium here. That was very ninja-like, librarian-like, might you say? So we have Rich Allen with the library.
We didn't catch a lot. Could you repeat those?
No.
I just wanted to come tonight and thank council and city of Littleton for their past and continued support, especially the Littleton community. And as the mayor said, if you haven't been down in a while, come see what's new. And if you haven't been down at all, definitely come down, see what's going on. It's National Poetry Month. Come down, I'll read you a limerick that's not suitable for work. But in all seriousness, the council's been very supportive this past year, especially last time I was here, was to eliminate overdue fines, and that's gone very well at the library. So good things are coming in the future, and I encourage you to come on down.
Thank you. All right, next up, item eight, Consent Agenda Items. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A, Resolution 43 of 2024, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the city of Englewood, designating the city of Littleton a sub-zone administrator of the South Metro Enterprise Zone. B, Resolution 44 of 2024, amending a contract with David Evans and Associates, Inc., for design services on the County Line Road Shared Use Path Connections Project. C, Resolution 52 of 2024, authorizing two applications for funding from the Arapahoe County Open Spaces Grant Program for one, Santa Fe Regional Trail Connection, and two, Community Trail Connection. D, ID 2498, a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2024, regular meeting of the city council. Is there a motion?
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second from councilmember Ryden. Any discussion, comment on this consent? Seeing none, I'll open the vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, next up, we have general business. We have just one item on general business tonight. We have Resolution 34, 2024, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, or LDDA, for the Downtown Development Authority Support and Services. We'll have a presentation by staff to kind of go over it. Council can ask any questions, and it's just a resolution. There is no public comment period for this one. So city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council, once again. This item tonight, we're glad to bring it to you. We've had a good first year of operation with our Downtown Development Authority, and we're pleased this year to present an updated intergovernmental agreement that really formalizes, clarifies a few of the things that I think we've already been doing, and a couple of things that we know that we things that we know that we need to. And so I'll just focus for a moment on what those points are, and then I'll, I'll ask the, the LDDA interim director, Jenny Starkey, to just comment on, I think, the importance of those items in the, in the agreement as the LDDA moves forward in its development. So first of all, one of the things we're, we're pleased to, to formalize is, is recognizing that the DDA can play a role and, and have some use, some use rights to the Sternberg Lights downtown for their use of, of marketing and also just getting the word about, out about what's, what's happening. They'll also, with that, have, have responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of the brackets and the banners there. Also, just, just formalizing timing of the quarterly reports to the, of DDA for sales tax revenues received, and also just that, that communication that we have on that important topic. Next, it just clarifies the annual budgeting process for the, for the, the DDA, and that they will be, be submitting their draft budgets on, on July, between July 31st and September 13th for each year. And along with that, very importantly, we've kind of documented the importance of roles in affirming the mill levy for the Downtown Development Authority, and this, this agreement will do that. And finally, this updated IGA will formalize and make possible the financial support that the city has, has, has committed to for 2024 and into 2025 in the amount of $193,517. This item was presented to the city council probably four to six weeks ago, and we're eager to kind of, to continue our partnership with the DDA as they continue to build support for the work that they're doing and deliver services downtown at that enhanced level as was envisioned. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny Starkey and ask her for any comments on how the, this agreement will work for the DDA.
Great, thanks, Jim. Councilman Mayor, thanks for having me. One point of clarification, not interim, I'll be executive director as long as the board will have me.
Thank you.
So, but I, I did want to say thank you. I wasn't at the meeting when you did approve the funding for the mill levy that wasn't certified, so on behalf of the board, I wanted to say thank you for the continued support to the DDA. And as Jim said, the IGA will release those funds so we can continue on our good work, which I think you've seen over the past now year, that we've been able to really do what we have said that we would in the operating plan that we had submitted to last year, which also covers this year. So our IGA is pretty much the same as what you approved the first year that we were in operations with those few changes that Jim had mentioned. I will point out, though, one specification on, if you have it in front of you, and I just realized these pages aren't numbers, my apologies, on page four, and this is in Article II, Section 1K. We are, we did look at extending the budget draft submittal to you this year because we will not receive revenue estimates for tax increment financing until August. So in order to get you a budget that actually is something that's realistic for us, we've asked for this one-time extension, and that would be to you before September 13th, so you would have the time to move forward with that and ask questions, and we would be available for that presentation. If this timing does end up working, we would have to ultimately look at altering the, the ordinance that formed the DDA as it is specified specifically at this state in the, the ordinance that formed the DDA. So this year is just a trial run, and we'll go from there if it works for all parties involved. But outside of that, the goal, as I had said last year when we presented the first IGA, is to really look at, get this IGA to a point where it can hopefully serve our organizations in perpetuity. And then what we would be presenting is a service agreement, which would designate what the city services are, and then what the DDA's services are on top of that baseline services. But that is a future goal, and we will continue presenting the IGA as it works for the city and the DDA until we get to that point. But that is how many districts in our metro area operate with their city partners. Other than that, I hope that you've all seen the new banners that were hung. I want to specifically thank the city's Communication Department for using some of their funds left over from last year to help us print those banners, and then we took over the operations and maintenance of that. And then I also wanted to invite you all to the April 16th event that's being hosted by the DDA. It is a business networking opportunity to meet the board and the staff of the DDA, as well as some of our partners. Thank you, Councilwoman Peters, for already registering, but I will make sure that you get that invite and hope to see you there. And I'll open, I'm open to any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Reden.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Those banners look wonderful. Are they going to be up year-round?
The banners are currently set to be up year-round. We're looking at, if funding allows, to be able to change those out seasonally, depending on what messaging we have.
Okay. And will that be a board decision that does that? Is there a subcommittee that's going to decide on that? Is there members of those merchants down there that might want to weigh in or other people?
Currently, currently, right now, it's just meant for brand awareness and for, mostly for brand awareness. But as they, as we look at new designs to change in and out, the board at the beginning of the DDA's formation did consider committees and councils. However, that was not moved forward because we were standing the organization up and making sure that we could just build a foundation to operate as an organization. So whether the board would like to move forward in that direction is unclear at this time, but for now, it's just basic messaging to support small businesses in the district and make sure that people know that the DDA is an organization that is around and helping to enhance, create vitality, vibrance, and promote the area.
Great, thank you. And how is the coordination going? Just, you got the website up and like there's been events and things like that. How have, have you experienced that?
I mean, it's been going well. It's all on my shoulders, so I think it's going well. But right now, we're sending out two e-blasts a month. One goes to the general public, anybody that wants to sign up on our website, which is littletondd.org, and you receive an email about the happenings that are occurring in the downtown area. The second one goes out to all of our constituents and stakeholders, so any businesses, property owners, residents, and partners of ours, and it is an e-blast that is sent with news that affects the way that you do business downtown. And I will, I see this getting a little bit more involved as a newsletter as events start taking place, as there potentially is news about the Denver Water Project or Project Downtown, if there are street closures, et cetera, and that informs businesses to help them do business better. Our website is maintained by our staff member, myself, and a marketing consultant that has been hired hourly. We change the blogs once a week to maintain search engine optimization and make sure that we are one of the top websites in the search for anything happening downtown, as well as our calendar of events, which puts out all event information for anything happening within the district boundaries, and that is something that anybody who is in the district boundaries can submit to, or we will scour calendars throughout the entire area and make sure that those are, events are promoted. We'll hopefully be launching social media within the next few months, and that'll be another great way for us to promote everything that's happening downtown.
Great, thank you for that. And for any of our five people watching this or the other people here, where can they go to sign up for that newsletter?
Littleton, littletondd.org. Thanks, Gretchen.
Any other questions, council? Seeing no other questions? Great. Is there a motion?
Yep. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 34-2022, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, LDDA, for Downtown Development Authority Support and Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 34. Any further discussion or comments, council? Seeing none, I will open the voting.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item 10 on the agenda is ordinances on second reading in public hearings. We have none. At 11 is adjournment? No further business? We're adjourned.